All those willing and able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody ready? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the agenda? Any discussion? Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Number four, public forum. None, okay. Then we'll move on to number five, presentation. None, okay. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody wishes to have pulled from the consent agenda? Anything you wish to have pulled from the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Before we do the vote, I would like to recognize Arrow Boosters Club for donation of $2,319.80 for football headsets. Arrow Booster Club for $1,569 for Bulgarian bags for wrestling. Arrow Booster Club donation of $154.53 for hotel room for Teresa Stangle for state football. Arrow Booster Club donation of $196.50 for hotel rooms for girls tennis. Christ's King Lutheran Church donation of $100 to the wellness room. First Bank and Trust donation of $100 to the elementary PBIS. The Jasper Evangelical Lutheran Church donation of $185 to the wellness room. And Mark Morgan DDS donation of $50 to the elementary PBIS. And I would also like to recognize Evelyn Klein and Katie Legler and thank them for their time of working in the district. So, since we have first and second, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Wanted Katie. Okay, motion passes. Move on to number seven, the financials. 7.1, review elementary building budget year-to-date.
This is where we're at February 10th with the bills that came in and remaining balance is $517,753. Spies, $181,831 that's going to come off yet for what, Cross Anderson still owes for retainage. Estimated balance remaining of $335,922.
That's a contingency bond, Kevin?
Yes.
So that's up from what, month to month?
Well, we've kind of been in that estimation about, that's where it's about at, so.
Are there any other questions for Jackie? Any questions? That's a non-action item. Excuse me, so then we'll move on to 7.1, review of new elementary building bills.
This month was just $36,000. Probably the lowest amount, but again, what we've got is about four contractors who have retainage remaining that Cross Anderson has to sign off on, so. There's just a little bit left out there for that, so.
Okay. Any questions on the elementary building bills? Any questions? That too is a non-action item, so we'll move on 7.1.2, approved treasurer's report for elementary building bond.
Ending balance and the bank statement was $557,639.
Okay. Does anybody have questions for Jackie on that? Any questions? And I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for elementary building bond.
So moved.
Second.
Did you get them, Melanie?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of approval of the treasurer's report for the elementary building bond signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.2, review of budget year-to-date. Jackie?
Okay, this has the revised budget on it. And we are currently at 56%. Last year at this time, we were at 55%.
Okay. Any questions of Jackie on the budget year-to-date? Any questions? Hearing none, oh, that's a non-action item. We'll move on to 7.3, approved treasurer's report for January. Jackie?
Hey, the current cash balance, $6.7 million. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
I'll move to approve the treasurer's report.
Randy, any second?
Second.
Amy. All those in favor to approve the treasurer's report for January signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.4, approve regular bills for February. Does anybody have any questions on the regular bills for February? Any questions on the regular bills for February? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the regular bills for February?
So moved.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Did you get them, Melanie?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor to approve the regular bills for February signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.5, approve high school activity bills for February. Are there any question on the high school activity bills? Any questions on the high school activity bills? And I have a motion to approve the high school activity bills for February, so. Lance, do I have seconds?
Second.
Chrissy. All those in favor to approve the high school activity bills for February signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to number eight, board forum and information. 8.1, board reports and updates. Anything from the board members?
Policy committee met week and a half though.
Yep.
Went through a bunch of policies, nothing big, just some language stuff that's on the, I think they're all one reading, right?
One reading tonight, yep. I think there were nineteen.
Yep.
Okay.
Calendar committee met.
Yeah, we have a meeting on Thursday at 4:30 with staff to get insights from them on some ideas, so.
Okay.
4:30, right?
You want to put anything in, Brad?
Finance met.
I was sick.
Nothing.
Okay.
And personnel committee met with teachers in a meet and confer. Discussed the articles that had been in the paper. And had some very good dialogue, I thought. And other than that, I mean, there wasn't anything, as it's not a decision-making point or decision-making meeting, I mean, we just visited over a lot of articles. That article and talked about various, various things that maybe we could or couldn't do. One thing we did discuss is, you know, bottom wages and, and some of that and being their union with more than multiple groups within the district. Any contract we have is union, so we are bound by the union agreements. You know, so. That was one. One was looking at the test scores and we got some good feedback from the teachers and I thought, and we explained where some of our comments came from and how they were. What was in the paper was just a snippet of what the whole conversation entailed. So.
We talked about what we're doing and what's working and
Yep.
when to expect it to know if it's working and that type of thing, too.
Yep. So I think all in all, it was a good meeting. And, you know, we may, we've got another meet and confer scheduled, what, three months down the road?
Yep, quarterly.
Yeah. And if we need to meet sooner, we'll, we'll do that.
So is the plan to continue on a quarterly basis then, kind of be into a normal rhythm of communication?
Yeah, that's, that's already our set dates. So, anything else from board members? Anybody else? Okay. We'll move on to nine, administrators' reports. 9.1, superintendent's board report.
Enrollment this month is, is down from last month a little bit, but we're still at where we were to start the year. March, we have, there'll be a closing on the Brown and Hill properties, so that'll be coming up this month sometime. We'll take care of that. The city did inform us, Dan Delaney, Justin Schroyer, and Evan Schiller will be the committee that will meet with our negotiations committee to discuss the library agreement and work on putting a new one together, so. Haven't heard back from them yet. Sent an email on Friday and we'll see when we can try to get together, so. Hopefully it's in the next couple of weeks, so.
So the, the closing, will we have to have a special meeting for that?
I think we'll try to get it done at the regular meeting in
In March?
March, so where that's all at.
Okay. Any questions of Kevin? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to 9.2, principals' board report. Tony?
It's just me tonight.
Yeah.
No, Dr. Strasser, so. I just wanted to report on, we started our fast-track program here at the beginning of February. This is funded through our SRR3 funds. We go after school Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays. From 3:15 to 4:15, we have a room for K2 and a room for 3.5. K2, we have about 21 kids, and 3.5, we have 25, so we have 46 kids right now in the program. They work on skills and concepts, as well as homework that they may have missed from when they were gone from COVID or any kind of other illness that might be going around. We have two to three teachers and a para for each room. And we also provide transportation and snacks, so I just kind of wanted to let you know what we were doing there for some of those kiddos. So, and that's all I got.
Okay, I did have a question from a parent. Do you know what the summer programs are going to be looking?
We haven't, as admin, looked at that yet, so.
How far out before you're going to?
We usually start that talk in March so that we have something ready by April, so. Yep.
So this program, can anyone sign up for it, or is it kids that are?
We have, our, our teachers will talk to parents during communication days and let them know if it's something that they feel they need. Yep.
So it's by recommendation?
By recommendation.
What, what was the total budget for this one?
It's, um, go ahead. Did you? It's a percentage of the SRR3 funds. Is it 20%?
We have to set aside 20%.
Mm-hmm.
So it's $350,000. This program is not costing that.
Yeah.
Yeah. No.
Yeah. Is that what you're, are you wondering how much that?
I was just wondering, like, of the 350 that we have available, or like, this is just one small piece, I would imagine, of the big puzzle, right?
Yep.
We'll be using summer school for the next couple of years, be able to be paid for through that, and if there's other ideas that we come up with this. Those funds are available for that, so.
Then I did have one other question from a parent. How are, so the week that we did the distance learning, how are the days tracked for the students? So if a student participated in distance learning that whole week,
Mm-hmm.
were they absent, or how was that counted?
As long as they get their, their work in, we count them, so.
Because this particular parent, their child was distance learning every day and was counted absent, COVID excused.
So, but they were participating?
Yes.
They may have just marked it as COVID excuse because they had COVID, I don't know, but we can cer, if they call, we can certainly look at that and check that and fix that.
Okay.
So, but I don't know what I don't know, so they have to call and let us know, so.
Okay, well, I know this, this parent has been in contact with their teacher and
Okay.
and they weren't real happy with the response they got from the teacher on it.
Just have them call me.
Okay. Okay.
Is there, is there a high school program at all with SRR funding that we're looking at doing? I mean, you probably don't know one.
I don't know.
Kind of similar to like this fast-track for elementary, one of your.
High school does more just focus on credit recovery, because that's typically where where that is at. Middle school might have, if they found there were some needs in middle school, they could do probably something with skill recovery, which is what this is supposed to focus on.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Any other questions? It's non-action, then we'll move on to 9.3, director of curriculum teaching and learning board reports.
Good evening. This past month, we've worked on academic standard review and resource sessions during our early outs. So far, we've completed 7 through 12 math and K through 12 science, as they have, the science group has new standards that will be implemented in the 24-25 school year, as well as having a brand-new MCA test, which will be called the MCA 4 in the spring of 2025. So we're working with the whole K through 12 to decide, do they need new resources, how would they like that, how are the standards going to be implemented, when will they be implemented? So I've already met with those groups, future groups, March 16th will be English Language Arts, K through 12, March 23rd will be Fine Arts, K through 12, as well as PE and Health, K through 12. And then April 20th will be Social Studies, K through 12. We're also gearing up for MCA testing. The dates and times are published on the district's webpage if you go to Departments, Curriculum Teaching and Learning, and then Testing and Assessments. Reading, grades 3 through 5 is April 27th and 28th from 8:45 a.m. to 10:45 a.m. Reading, grades 6 through 8 and 10 is April 27th during blocks 1 and 2. Both of those groups also have a makeup day, which is the 29th. Math is grades 3 through 5 on May 3rd and 4th, 8:45 a.m. to 10:45 a.m. And grade 6 through 8 and 11 is on May 4th during blocks 1 and 2. Those same groups also have a makeup on May 5th. Science, grades 5, 8, and high school will be on May 11th, and right now, it's scheduled from 8:15 a.m. to 10:45 a.m. Staff will be trained to be test monitors during our early out on March 30th. And I'm also participating in BTS coaching for administrators. I've completed two of four coaching sessions that consist of 60 minutes of pre-work and a 60-minute virtual coaching session. I very much enjoyed my coaching so far and feel I've already grown and learned techniques to help me better navigate my position. So I feel the coaching has been worth my time and the effort it takes to participate in it, as well as the expense, so. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Melanie?
I know one time we brought this up, but when, when we're doing the MCA testing for the, like, do we do anything to like get the kids like jazzed up? I know, like in Minnioda, for example, they have like a pep fest where people line the halls and they bring the kids down and they kind of get them going. I mean, is that a thought that we've ever had, or?
I usually leave that up to grade-level teams as far as what they do to pump the kids up. My role is to ensure that the test is provided in a standardized manner and that everyone has what they need to take the test and that it's given in a standardized manner. So that is grade-level team duty.
Be something different, maybe fun.
As a former teacher, that's what I did with my students. We had a great time in the auditorium in Laverne. We would feed them breakfast and have a big show and just really get them all pumped up, so.
Well, my kid loves food, so.
He's got a couple of years yet before we MCA test him.
Are there any other questions or comments for Melanie? Anything? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to number 10, discussion items. 10.1, the use of the funds from the sale of the Brown and the Hill properties.
This month with that kind of coming to a close, and I talked with the finance committee a little bit about what should we do, and there's, you know, there's some ideas that we may want to consider, and I think the board should think about. I think your options are, you can put the money in the general fund, do what you want with it. If you want to put it into a specialized fund, you can probably look at doing that. Another concept was maybe looking at development of a foundation or an endowment, where that money would sit in perpetuity and if you wanted to do some type of foundation or something, you could try to solicit other funds in there. A lot of school districts our size have foundations like that, so. I guess that was something that we kind of had on the agenda here to discuss. I don't know what your thoughts are, if you want me to look things up or come with something, and how you want to, maybe that could be a work session, too, in March when we, we start talking about what do we want to do with this, so.
Does the interest rate in an endowment fund depend on the markets, or is it a set rate?
Depends upon what the foundation says, your, what are you going to do with your money? That, it, that's what foundations do, they lay out what you can invest in, how you can invest it, so that would be determined by. Most of them have foundation boards. I don't think it's anything the school board would run, it would be more of an independent entity. And where that all goes. And I think there's a question, too, about can we take the funds and the proceeds from Brown and Hill and put in there? That would be another question, too, of where that's all at, so.
I know Walbasso has a foundation, and they do like an annual gala, and they raise like $100,000 every year to go into that foundation. I like that idea.
Yeah.
And then it kind of continues a legacy of Hill and Brown properties, too, you know, forever and.
That is, yep. I know there's, I was at a session at MREA and, and you know, one of the school districts that had a foundation just developed, it's, it's kind of a, they said now is getting to be quite the time because there's going to be an awful lot of wealth exchange from generations, and sometimes they're looking for places to give donations to on behalf of a family or, and that's some type of legacy. I think you look at like the Stanky Scholarship that we have, that's its own thing, but you could have somebody give a million dollars and say, I want it for scholarships, like, like Elder Stanky did. And that stays there, and that'll be there forever, so. Depends upon what you, how it all works, so.
I think we should have a work session to look at the options and I would say gather information on what it takes to set up a foundation. Because I think that can be kind of a lengthy process.
And I don't, again, I don't know if even if this, how much this a foundation can be set up to benefit a school, so that's the only place the money goes, but it's, it is its own corporation, so to speak, so it isn't something that the school would have oversight over. It becomes its own.
So who, who decides what money comes out of it, then?
That.
Just that foundation?
Whatever the board and however you draw it up. A lot of them have, they, a lot of schools have them where they have these, and then like teachers can write like mini-grants and to do things, and really, it's not meant to supplant anything the school district does, it's more to take it kind of to another level and do really cool things. Maybe you say we're, you go to school in Pipestone, you don't have to pay for musical instruments, or, you know, we want to have this or that, and and I think you can, scholarships or whatever you, whatever goes in there, and someone makes a donation, may say, I want this to go for scholarships. Well, then, they, you can have all these little subcategories of funds in there, so.
Yeah, I think a work session.
Yeah.
My only, my only comment is I, I would rather not just go in the general fund, and then in three years, it's gone and we don't know where it went. I'd rather it go towards something, but I think we need a work session to talk through more details and options.
And it, it may take us many months to get this figured out, so.
Yeah, I think, and in the meantime, once we get the proceeds, we put them in a dedicated fund, and that doesn't get touched for anything.
Right.
Let's not, I don't know how you would say that, really wouldn't be in the general fund, or would it be dedicated?
You can put it in a signed fund balance.
Yeah.
Jackie loves them.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I will work on something for March.
Okay. Then we will move on to number 11. Approval of policies, 11.1.
We have, the policy committee reviewed 19 policies. We try to get through our policies every four years roughly, and it's just nice to make sure that, you know, we're watching them and reading them and making sure, so here's an opportunity where you saw these policies, there were no major changes in them, it was grammatical and some were statute things. Probably the one that I would point out is policy 751, which is not a MSBA policy, model policy. That's our own internal controls policy that was developed by our business manager, Jackie Kennedy. And she's updated this policy to match what our current procedures and practices are. And really what it is, is how, how do we make sure that more than multiple people are observing when we spend dollars, so. I don't know if you have anything to add to this, Jackie?
No, if you read it and have questions, let me know.
Okay.
Actually, when I first developed it, I don't know, was it 2008?
Yeah.
I got copies from other school districts and just kind of worked with that and came up with the policy.
But the finance, the policy committee recommended, they went through them all and said, they recommended one reading, so.
Okay, so the policies are, policy 102, equal educational opportunities. Policy 103, complaints for students, employees, parents, and other persons. Policy 201, legal status of the school board. Policy 202, school board officers. Policy 204, school board meeting minutes. Policy 207, public hearings. Policy 208, development, adoption, and implementation of policies. Policy 209, code of ethics. Policy 210, conflict of interest for school board members. Policy 212, school board member development. Policy 301, school district administration. Policy 302, superintendent. Policy 407, employees' right to know exposure to hazardous substances. Policy 408, subpoena of a school district employee. Policy 412, expense reimbursement. Policy 420, students and employees with sexually transmitted infections, diseases, and certain other communicable diseases and infectious conditions. Policy 422, policies incorporated by reference. Policy 520, student surveys. And policy 751, internal control. Do I have a motion to approve all those policies?
So moved.
Brad, Brad and Lance, was it?
Cool.
Okay. All those in favor of approval of the policies signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to 11.2, fiscal year '22 budget amendment. Jackie?
Okay, since this year was kind of crazy with SRR and COVID and so many unexpected things, I basically went through and redid all the salaries, all the benefits. Looked at, redid all the SRR and COVID, made sure the expenses and revenue were there, were, they were supposed to be.
Normally in June, you, you accept the budget for this year, and then that stays in place. If you're ever going to make any adjustments, you have to do a, the board has to approve a, an amendment to the budget. The June budget had a $1.1 million deficit. This one is much clearer, it's at about a $700,000 deficit. And again, a lot of that, like Jackie said, goes back to, we've got SRR funds, where are we using them, how are we accounting for them? We've got some expenses, and so this is much more accurate than what was provided in. We've got some expenses, and so this is much more accurate than what was provided in, in June.
And I adjusted the student counts back up because I'm conservative when I do it in June and I went by the latest student counts we had. Special education, that's a whole nother beast in itself. The reason we're getting more money in special ed is by six thirty-two thousand twenty-one. Remember how November October says those are just estimates? It was low. This is, we have this little problem. You don't get your final special ed number until, actually, until eighteen months after you do the budget. Six months actually after you complete the fiscal year. You can't really do it.
Yeah.
Needs to be changed.
That would be great.
So we recommend that you make this budget adjustment.
Okay, is there any discussion on the Fiscal Year Twenty-two Budget Amendment? Any discussion? Can I have a motion to approve the fiscal twenty-two budget amendment?
So moved.
Katie?
Go ahead, Randy.
Randy or Chrissy?
Katie or Amy?
Katie.
Katie. Okay, all those in favor of approval of the Fiscal Year Twenty-two Budget Amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eleven point three, approve achievement and integration plan and fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Three years ago, we were allowed to be Achievement and Integration District because Edgerton was racially isolated and because we touched them. And it was a three-year process. We've now been basically renewed and we're racially isolated, so we qualify for achievement and integration. So this one, this kind of has a brief overview for.
Quick little brief overview. Each plan that gets approved needs three goals. Last time, we were okay with only two goals. So our goals, our, two of our goals from last time look pretty similar. With the pandemic, we really did as best we could. We didn't get to put all of our teeth behind it and have all the activities and things happen. So we did the best we could. So we are going to have a goal of, our first goal is by twenty twenty-five, the percent of students in our free and reduced student group will increase from our current proficiency level of twenty-seven point six percent to thirty-seven percent as measured by the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments in Math. Knowing that growth over time is slow and we don't know what the future holds, we are able to go in, like, right after the pandemic happened, within about six months, we were asked to go revisit our goals. If we don't meet our goals, we are required to spend about, we are required to set aside two to twenty percent of our funding for focus on those goals. So we will be doing that and we will be focusing in on this. These strategies include our math specialist, as well as our math interventionist. Our second goal is by twenty twenty-five, require all teachers of math, K through twelve, to complete an analyzing student learning tool through the new teacher center with a math specialist to increase growth of instructional effectiveness. This growth has to deal with teacher equity and allowing all students the opportunity to learn from a high-level teacher. This will include the analyzing student learning tool, as well as our math specialist. Goal three is by twenty twenty-five, Pipestone students in grades K through twelve will self-report in an increased level their comfort with initiating and maintaining social relationships with students different from themselves, either racially, ethically diverse, socio-economically diverse, from an average level of a two out of a five to a four out of five as measured by a district-created survey utilizing the five-point Likert scale. So we have to also have a goal in integration. And so we will continue to work with Edgerton on this. Plus, districts that touch us are eligible to work with us as well. So far, we haven't had a lot of feedback from those districts of, would you like to work with us or not? And if any do, then we will bring that back to the board and share, hey, we got contact from this district. They're willing to do a cross-district activity with us. The cross-district programs are the math integration programs. They can happen during the school year, they can happen during the summer. Like, for example, during, last year, during the fall and winter and during the spring, we had cross-district virtual integration activities for math, where the kids were both online in the different classrooms in Edgerton and in Pipestone, and they were able to work on math goals and meet one another and get to know one another as people. And then this summer, we invited Edgerton students to our math-focused summer school. And so about twelve kids from Edgerton were able to participate in that. So we look forward to growing that and still focusing on math and making sure that we're able to use and, and focus on the achievement of our students in the area of math, as well as integrating them so that they're comfortable with all types of people. Questions?
So how are they, or what number are you using for the free and reduced? Since when we looked at MCA testing, you know, and reports from administration is only a specific group is required to fill out free and reduced, but everybody gets fed.
Correct.
So some of those that used to have to fill it out to get it, get a free meal, so they're not doing any of that. So what number do we use?
So I have to use what is designated in their MARS, so in their student information system. So those that fill out the form are the ones that are designated in MARS, so that when our test results go in to the state and everything is collaborated and collected, that's the number that we have to use. We can't take into consideration, okay, these kids should be in that group, but they're not. So I have to focus on the group that I'm able to gather the data from.
Prior, prior, we were at about fifty-one, fifty-two percent free and reduced. We're now around thirty-five percent. And one of the issues with our budget also is that that also impacts our compensatory dollars, which we lost about two hundred and fifty thousand in revenue in compensatory due to the drop in, in our free and reduced lunch stuff. But because we've got free lunches, are also our food service budget is up about two hundred thousand, so. But we can't use that in, in the education, so.
And Mr. Botts, to, to help, like, why we kept the scope of free and reduced is our racially-isolated student group is our American Indian population. That is a small enough percentage that if I focused on that, it would be individual pick-out students. And that's not, would never be approved by an MDE group. Because they want to be able to look at a larger sum of population, not single any certain population out. So most often, the, the student groups that are racially-isolated are included in that free and reduced. Not always, but most often, and it covers the most amount of students.
The dollars we get for this program is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, of which twenty-five percent is local levy and the state matches seventy-five percent. So they, 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 or they give a lot of state aid for this program.
So the first goal, is that a, I mean, over three years, is that an achievable percentage that we can get?
I'm hoping with being here every day, with focusing in on goal number two, with looking at analyzing student learning, really digging in, taking some time, and looking at our instructional practices, as well as increasing the math activities that we've already started doing the past three years and moving forward more, continuing with what we have and increasing that, yes. You will also notice that our math specialist remains K through twelve and with Edgerton. However, we shifted our math interventionist to the lower grades. In the last plan, our math interventionist supported grades three through eight. Now the math interventionist is going to support grades K through three. Make sure I said that correctly.
Mr. Wheeler.
Exactly, he's like, is that accurate? Yes. So shifting our focus to our lower students so that as they, if we can get them on the right path, that they can hopefully maintain being on the right path, knowing the school board's focus is on that lower-level learning and really boosting that, that area so that they have a good start and can get off where they need to go.
Okay.
So I need approval of that, as well as approval of the budget. So I need a plan approval and I need a budget approval.
Okay, do you need, do you have to have a specific dollar on the budget?
No. I do not believe, so I just need to have the budget up as presented.
As presented.
Okay, any other questions? Any other questions? So can I have a motion to approve the Achievement and Integration Plan and the Fiscal Year Twenty-three Budget?
So moved.
Katie?
Katie, okay, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of approval of the Achievement and Integration Plan and the Fiscal Year Twenty-three Budget signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eleven point four, Elementary Playground Proposal.
Can't remember if it was last month or December when the board said, let's move forward with, you know, the playground addition and also the ball fields back on the north side of the property. So we have a playground proposal and also the fencing and gate and electrical for the ball field. We do not yet have the finalized quote for the site work that needs to be done by Double D, but that's kind of, we're still waiting on that. But we do have this, we thought we'd bring this forward. Maybe, maybe Ms. Bartman, you can talk a little bit about the playground and how you came up with the, you've got the pictures and stuff of what we're looking at.
So I started a focus group in September for several reasons. And one of the things that came up with the things that, one of the questions was things you would change about the school. And pretty overwhelmingly, it was a bigger playground. So then my next question was, well, what would you like to see in the playground? Monkey bars, more swings, monkey bars, more swings, more slides. So when I went and talked to Wisconsin Playground, I said, I need something with lots of monkey bars and swings. And so he gave me some options and he also gave me a book. And I looked through and I picked out what I thought might be something the kids would like. And so he put together two options for me, which then I brought back to our next student focus group and they picked option two, which has the most monkey bars and the most swings. So that's where we are with that. So it was very student-focused and very student-driven, so.
Okay, are there any questions?
How many kiddos were on the focus group? Who was all included in that?
I pick one, so I have the teachers pick one student every month from grades, from each grade, from each classroom, grades three through five.
So about eleven, twelve kids.
Okay. Is there any?
Per month.
Per month, eleven to twelve kids.
So total, you probably had.
It's a different group each time, so that they all get, you know, different kids get a chance.
So you probably had input from sixty, seventy students?
Yep.
Is that what you're looking for?
Okay, any other questions?
I don't have a question, just I appreciate your approach on that and getting the kids involved and having some investment in that, I think is really great.
This would, the, the playground would go to the west side of the sidewalk back there. And then we've picked the location for the ball fields. They'll be across the road, kind of leaning more to the east, so they'll be able to utilize that parking. And then one of the things we really wanted to focus on was not having outfield fences because we want to, there's still a lot of multipurpose use of the ball, of that grass area. And if you start putting fences all the way around the fields, you really start limiting some physical education and other activities that may want to use that grassy area back there. But we will have backstops and area for that concession stand and a couple of scoreboards that we'll put in there too.
Yeah, and then there's still a grass area to the west of the baseball fields.
Right, yeah.
Nice green area for.
And you've already approved, the, the trees are going in, so there'll be shelter belt on the west and the north sides. They'll be going in this spring also, so that's already been ordered.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the Elementary Playground Proposal?
So moved.
Second.
Randy and Brad. All those in favor of the Elementary Playground Proposal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Chrissy, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes, meeting adjourned.